Um, let's go ahead and do the pledge. I'll go ahead and start it since I don't want to delegate it. Let's go ahead and I'll rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I figure there's only two of us, so it's either going to be Supervisor Sotelo or I to start it. So roll call, please. Supervisor Sotelo. Supervisor Gonzalez.
Here.
Thank you. All here. Okay, so can I get acknowledgement certificate of posting, please?
So move.
Okay. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have a 2-0 on that. Public comments, are there any members of the public that would like to make an announcement or a comment to any item not on the agenda? Do we have anybody on Zoom then?
On Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, can you please press star nine or the raised hand icon? Anything not on the agenda? And I have no public comment on Zoom.
Okay, so let's go ahead and go to the regular item then. So 5.1 will need a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of June 26th.
I move to approve the action minutes for June 26, 2024.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so a 2-0 on that one. Item number 5.2, receiving informational presentation on the capital improvements projects completed in the past year. And I guess that's you, Steve, right?
It'll start with me. Good afternoon, Supervisors, Ad hoc Committee Chair and Vice Chair and Members of the Public. So, yes, Steve Loop, Public Works Administrator. And I'm actually going to hand off this item to our Capital Program Manager, Salman Cosme, who's accomplished a lot this past year with the help of Jesus Saavedra, our Capital Projects Manager. We place this item on the agenda because there's questions from time to time about, you know, which, what's been accomplished and, you know, we have these long lists that the Board approves with their funds. And I think it's definitely worthwhile to see that a lot of the projects that the Board Supervisors approved to be completed last year were actually completed last year. So, without further ado, we'll have Salman come up and provide some details on our projects.
Thank you, Steve. Good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm a member of the public. I'm Salman Cosme, Capital Program Manager with the county. So, very quick, the Capitol Projects, Capitol Program oversees the Capitol Projects for about 20 county facilities. The vital work includes the renovation, repair, maintenance, and improvement as of the building structure as well as the building equipment, repair and/or replacement, including an HVAC system, fire sprinkler, plumbing, electrical. Addition to building general repair maintenance to ensure the building meets the standards and are up to code and are environmentally friendly. The recent projects that we completed before I jump on that item, I just want to highlight in previous fiscal year 2324, Board approved 59 Capitol projects, general fund and non-general fund Capitol projects, and we were completing 15 projects, 15 decent sized projects in the previous year. The list does not include the small or emergency projects into this presentation. So I'm going to start with the first one, the very first one is the... Do you want to move the slide? The... Sorry. Okay, sorry. So Public Works Yard Building Roof Replacement. So it's, the project was approved a couple of years ago and the roof was not in good condition, so we recently replaced that. And I do have a picture of the project and do you want me to show the picture right now for each project or should I go for each project? Right. Okay, sounds good.
I'm sorry. I think it would be helpful, though, I think, for the public following along to... And I think if, if, if the presentation is the same as what we have here, I think it's going to go in order, right?
Correct.
So I think showing the pictures is valuable, at least for the public and I think for members in the audience. So, yeah.
So, I do, so the pictures are included for first, at least 10 projects. We do have some small projects that are in the list, but we do not include the pictures. So the first one, we recently completed the building roof replacement at the Public Works Yard. We installed the roof, the gray, light gray shingles that looks nice. The second project we completed is the installation for, of the HVAC system at the Ag Department, homeless shelter building roof replacement, county council and auditors carpet and painting, the office space maximization and refurbishment. And if Board has any questions or need further details on the project, I'm happy to provide that too. General Hall tenant improvement, I do want to talk about this project. So this project includes the flooring, painting, and some general upgrades that includes the electrical modification, ceiling tile installation, camera system and security system upgrades. Phase one includes the building renovation and phase two is part of the security upgrade stuff. So we completed phase 100% and phase two is completed as well. However, Board, we requested Board to approve $17,000 for this fiscal year to spend on the remaining security items or upgrades that we are currently working on. Carpet for Sheriff's Office of Investigation, carpet front office of old jail, migrant center managers unit improvement. This project, for this project, we replaced the flooring, exterior interior painting and windows, and install new windows, assessors, tax collector, building interior improvement, jail boiler replacement, and historical park bathroom upgrades. So these are the projects that we accomplished in the previous year.
Okay. Do you want to go through the entire presentation or do you want to interrupt for public comment?
Except you, I mean, I can go to the entire presentation.
Do we have any public comment out of, as of this point?
Anybody in chambers like to make a comment? Go ahead and come on up to the podium. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have none.
Supervisor Sotelo, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for all of the hard work. I mean, it's, it's great to see some of these things accomplished. I have a couple of questions on the migrant center managers unit improvements. So I know that there's kind of two residences up there that are right next to each other. So there's the manager unit and then there's also another house that's in front of that one. Have any improvements done to this front, been done to this front house?
Not to the front ones. The history of the project is, in fiscal year 23, 2223, we had a budget allocated for the migrant center tiny homes improvement that we spent about $2 million for the improvement of 67 units. We had some remaining funds from that grant that state allows us to spend on the managers' unit. So we had very limited funds that we spent on the managers' unit and upgraded the unit. But we had not done any work with the front house.
Okay, I just think that, and this is probably not you at all, but I'm just going to say this, and I think there's potential, and I don't know, but I'm just assuming, I think potentially there could be some revenue that we could capture with that house. I know that house has sat vacant for quite some time. I believe it used to be housing for some of the, the office manager that worked at the migrant center. Since that person has been retired for probably, I don't know, 10 years now, there's been nobody in that front house. And I just think that we're looking for every source of revenue that we possibly can at this point. And so if there was a way that we could get it to, I'm guessing, sitting vacant for that long, it probably needs some work at this point. But if there was any opportunity for us to capture some revenue or to provide housing, there's so many people in this community that need housing, farm worker housing, whatever. I just think it's kind of sad to see it sitting up there completely unused.
I totally agree. Yeah, so once we have funding available for the project, we will be able to proceed with the renovation of the...
Just love to see it being utilized and potentially some revenue into us.
Great suggestion. Thank you. Okay, and if there's no other comments, I'm going to go ahead and let you carry on.
So, item 5.3, 911 Dispatch Center relocation from the current location on 4th Street to Technology Parkway. Before I provide an update on the project, very quick, the scope of the project is include transitioning five channels radio with phone lines and CAD system. Five channels include primary, which is law channel, and that is currently in progress, and I can talk about that in a minute. Fire channel, Public Works channel, Klima's channel, and MedNet channel. We have successfully completed the transition of the first, the primary channel, which is the law channel, at the 4th Street. So physically, the law channel is moved at the 4th Street. However, during the testing phase of the network connection, we discovered the connection are not connected with the 911 dispatch that, that's supposed to be connected. So it may be, you know, like the testing process or the connectivity need to be configured in order to catch the proper signal at the, at the technology location. We are currently working on the solution and that, based on the discussion with the vendor, we, we are hoping to get that resolved in a couple of weeks. So with that, once the channel or the radio system will be moved and I would say will be working and functionally, 100% will be functioned at the technology location, the phone lines that, I can also talk about that in a minute, that we are shipped already, and that will be connecting with that channel. So there are three things. One is the channel of the radio system, the other one is the phone line and the CAD system. So for each channel, these three equipment will be connected and will be integrated. So once we have that channel set up and the phone lines will be connected to that channel with the CAD system, then that the next step will be to move on to the next channel. The strategy is to transition each channel one by one. Because of the traffic, we cannot just move, so let's say this primary channel will be set up, then the next channel, in this case, will be the fire channel, we move the traffic to the law channel from the fire channel. So the same process that we have, that we're currently proceeding with the law channel will be for the fire channel as well as other remaining channels. The overall project, the entire project, all five channels, we are anticipated that everything will be completed and by end of this year, by December.
And you already have the funding allocated for that?
Correct. The Board approved the funding for the project in this fiscal year.
Okay. Yes.
So it says AT&amp;T currently provides the SCR 911, but it looks like the final step is to have Verizon. So are we going to be switching from AT&amp;T to Verizon or Verizon will only do the new six phone lines?
So, yes. The Verizon, we are switching AT&amp;T to Verizon. So AT&amp;T will be giving us the phone lines that they already shipped, and the Verizon, we will be proceeding with Verizon for all the phone lines for this, for the channels, correct.
Are we going to be, are we getting a better rate with Verizon? Out of curiosity?
Great question. So I do not have that detailed at the moment, but our ID team is working on that, but we can provide that.
Which is what was the justification for switching from AT&amp;T to Verizon? Reliability, cost?
So reliability, better services for this, this project, and I will check for the rates as well.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any comments from the public for item number 5.3?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please come up to the podium. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and go on to item 5.4. So are you requiring any further direction from us? Because I see it says, it says to discuss and if desired, provide feedback and/or direction. Are you okay with just the questions that we're asking or do you need further direction beyond that for item 5.3 and 4?
Yeah, we are seeking more direction on 5.4.
5.3, how about 5.3 first? Are we okay with that?
We are okay with that.
Okay, so then let's go ahead and hear 5.4 and then if there's directions that we can provide for you, we will go ahead and give it to you, especially since it's the library staff.
Alrighty, let's see here, 5.4, okay. So a lot of pieces in place with item 5.4, library expansion. And just to recap some recent activities, per direction from this ad hoc, our team, county team did explore utilizing the bottom floor of the old courthouse. And I know the ad hoc committees, we've had some other meetings and just, just discussions per county protocols, but in summary, what the conclusion we came to for the old courthouse was that the bottom floor of the courthouse in its current configuration, the, we can only approximately get 12,000 square feet out of the bottom floor, which was the preferred strategy to utilize perhaps as a relocated location for the library. And so our overall team's conclusion and with input from the ad hoc was that expanding the existing library to 17,000 to 18,000 square feet, depending on how the budget numbers all play out, is the preferred method because that will increase the programmable area by 5 to 6,000 more square feet over the old courthouse. So very worthwhile exercise. And we'll talk about the old courthouse more shortly, but that's the status of the library. And if it's okay with the ad hoc, I'll kind of continue through some other items on the library, but stop me if you have questions on any of the slides or milestones upcoming.
Okay, thank you. So any questions, just chime in.
Okay, here we go. So, expanding the existing library in its location. So as of next month, our construction management team and our architects and our county staff, they will complete the design, build, package, scoping documents, technically in the beginning of October. And what that allows us to do is go out to bid and ask for a design build team to essentially take over the design and construction of the library expansion. So we're going to release that out to the world to request a team or, you know, teams to propose on that project was finishing the design and then performing the construction, design, build of the library expansion. So we'll receive proposals. And in January in 2025, the Board will be able to approve the contract for a design, build team to move forward with the library expansion. And we project it'll take eight or nine months to complete the design of the package for the library to be expanded. Now, what that means when I say complete the design, our current team is scoped to complete what they'll call a 30% design. And that's been coordinated with library staff and friends of library and a lot of folks so that the design build team has a really solid blueprint to make those drawings actually construction drawings and then start the construction of the project. So the first step for the design build team in January of 2025 is to start finalizing the design of the library expansion so that their own team, their own contractor, will be able to then complete the design package. And our teams will be involved between January and 2025 to ensure that that final design package looks very similar to the, the scoping documents, the 30% design that's being handed off to them. So where that gets us, so that's somewhere around fall of next year, so roughly a year from now. And then by February of 2026, a few months later, I'm going to explain this as we go along because you're going to have some questions. We need to complete the relocation of the assessors, library staff, Treasury Department into the old courthouse next door. And the elections team, which we'll talk about in a moment, could ultimately be relocated in that building as well, but they have some elections things going on in 2026 and they actually have to have their election equipment set by March of that year. So it might make sense for the, if the elections team is going to move into the old courthouse permanently like they used to be, it might make sense for them to wait until after that election occurs in 2026. There's a summer 2026 election. So after that election occurs, it's probably the best time for the elections to permanently move back to the courthouse. So, going back to February 2026, so the reason why we need folks, the assessors and the treasurers to be relocated into the courthouse by February is so that we can then, so they're currently at 1131 San Felipe, the assessors and the treasurers, treasurer slash tax collector. So we need to have them out by February 2026 so that three months later, through some improvements and things, we can actually move in Office of Education into San Felipe. So then we'll have the Office of Ed at San Felipe, we'll have the assessor, treasurer, and perhaps the library staff moved into the courthouse. And so what that will allow is in May of 2026, abatement, which is cleanup of hazardous materials and things from the library can get completed. And then June of 2026, library expansion construction can commence. Roughly 14 months later, 15 months later, in August of 2027, the construction can be completed per the grant funding. And that doesn't include furnishings and nice, pretty foo foo things that might go into the library. That's just bathrooms, walls, HVAC system, and the stacks and a few other things, the basic things that the grant funds are going to provide. That needs to be completed by August of 2027 so that in September of 2027, we can final all the financial records and things and, and meet the deadlines of our current grant schedule. So then soon after that, between October, excuse me, between August and October, we'll complete the installation of furnishing and finishes and the nice things that make the library look new and fresh. Those can be completed in October 2027 approximately. And we're projecting somewhere around November of 2027, we're going to move library staff into the building. And before you ask some questions, we're going to rewind just a bit because you might have some questions. So, what does that mean for the old courthouse? Well, what that means is, so we're in August 2024, we're working on releasing an RFP for the courthouse, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later to get your approval for that. But what we wanted, what we need to do, because the critical timeline right now is actually the old courthouse, which I'll explain in a second, because we have to have folks relocated into the old courthouse so the Office of Ed can go in 1131 so that we can actually restart the remodel of the library. So if we release RFP in September 2024 for the courthouse designed by an architect, October 24, the Board can award the contract because RFPs per our standard procurement process, the RFPs don't have to be approved by the Board, but we do want this ad hoc to approve that in a moment if that's the will of the ad hoc. So the RFP we can process, that doesn't have to go to the Board. That's just saying, please give us proposals to design the courthouse. That's all it does. However, for awarding contracts and money in October 2024, we're hoping we can say, okay, here's the architect selected, Board of Supervisors, do you approve that contract for that architect to design the courthouse? Then hopefully, six months later roughly, the design is complete of the old courthouse. April 2025, permit and bid, permit and issue is a bid to, issue bid to contractors so that by May of 2025, we have a contractor selected for the construction of the interior of the courthouse. So that approximately nine, 10 months later, which is tricky, we've complete the construction and relocation, complete construction of the courthouse and relocate assessor, library, staff, perhaps treasurer into the remodeled or old courthouse. And again, the elections team really doesn't have to be relocated anytime soon, excuse me, but soon after, and we'll talk about that more in a second, the elections team could ultimately be relocated to the remodeled courthouse. So I do have a little bit more, but this might be a good time to stop for questions or I can continue.
Supervisor Sotelo, do you have any questions?
Finished? Okay, let's finish.
No, no.
Is that, okay, okay, all right. So the direction input we're hoping from the ad hoc is one, should we move forward with the RFP process so that we can onboard an architect to design the old courthouse and remodeling so that future county staff can then move into the courthouse? That's number one. Number two, it, per staff and some internal coordination, it appears that a good strategy moving forward for the courthouse is to have staff offices, specifically the assessor, treasurer, IT departments, all to be on the top floor, and election department on the bottom floor. And the specifics of that is not necessarily what we're asking for direction, but just the fact that you're on board with having staff move into the old courthouse. Those other departments, we think, are appropriate, but, and we can talk about that in a moment. The IT department could wait a while because if the library staff does need to move into the old courthouse temporarily, then the IT department might have to wait because they're roughly the same sized departments. And so it might make sense to have the library staff move into the old courthouse while the library is being remodeled, and then the IT department would have to wait until the library staff has moved into their ultimate location. So there's a parallel track where library staff are actually starting to look for a temporary home as well, just to research if there's some space available in the county. But if not, then the plan would be to have library staff relocated temporarily into the courthouse. And number three, because right now, the Hall of Records, which is the smaller building adjacent to the courthouse, is not really being utilized at all, and our grounds maintenance team is looking to expand and they need more, they need some more room, as much for storage as for office space. And they've actually added a new staff member. So if it's okay with this ad hoc, we, and we talked about this internally with the admin staff, it might be a good idea to allow the building and grounds maintenance team to relocate to the Hall of Records. So I know that's a lot, so I'll pause and, and we can discuss as appropriate.
On your item number three, where would you be storing all of the, the records that are there at the Hall of Records currently? Where would they be going? Because those are all the, the important birth certificates, death certificates, marriage certificates and so forth. Because at one time, years ago, I was a temp employee there at the recorder's office and I recall all of those records. Have we gone all to electronic or are there going to be hard copies somewhere else? And where is that location?
Yeah, so Salman can correct me. I don't know if there's a, a plan to relocate what's there, i.e. the, the things that survived there can stay there and then the building maintenance folks would just utilize the available space, basically. Is that correct? Yeah.
Because the vital records need to be in a secure location. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Hold on, Henny, did you want to?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. So I did talk to Francisco, our clerk recorder at Bridge Shore Waters this morning, and most of that stuff, a lot of it has already been scanned, so they're scanning electronically. So he is getting rid of the books as, as he goes. He said that he'll have, I think he's down to, like, he's got 60% of the books in-house still right now. The other 40 have already been dealt with. He's, he's going to continue to keep scanning those. So those books won't be, we weren't saving the books any longer. So it's all been electronically saved. He said he wouldn't be using the old Hall of Records for any storage anymore of books.
Okay.
So that would free up that old Hall of Records building for additional, whoever, whichever staff could go in there. We did talk about it admin wise and we did talk to Public Works a little bit about that. And we thought, well, maybe IT could go in there, but the issue with that is it's an old cement building and IT needs contact, you know, contact kind of stuff. And so I think that would probably be more of an impact on that building if we wanted to leave it as is versus building maintenance. I mean, they just, they want some office space and would probably use some of it for storage, but I don't, I don't foresee them doing anything to the integrity of the building.
It's just such a beautiful historic building. I would hate to see anything for us to have to dispose of it or ruin it of any sort.
Absolutely. I think that would be, you know, an understanding that they're not going to be knocking down walls or things like that. They'd have to use the space as is. And we also could talk about, you know, if they need to put racks in there, you know, not attached to the walls, maybe they're freestanding or something for storage. I don't know. I don't know exactly what they'd have to put, what they'd be wanting to put in there, but I think that... But I think that could be definitely discussed.
Okay. You have any questions? Is the presentation completed? Okay, now I'm on the last page. So we still need to go to public comment, but did you have any questions? Okay, so let's see if there are any comments from the public because there's a lot that has been stated. And I see Francisco's in the room, so we like to hear from him too, especially as to the vital records. I know I've heard from, from our interim CEO, but I would love to hear directly from Mr. Diaz and then the library staff too about the plans moving forward and the temporary spot that you may be maintaining in terms of the, the old courthouse while construction is being completed before the IT staff gets moved in. So any comments from anyone, questions, concerns, anyone on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. In chambers, go ahead and come on up to the podium. Let's go. And then anybody from the library after that.
A lot has transpired since the fire and I just want the public to know that we are doing our due diligence. We are meeting with staff. We are making sure that the decision that this ad hoc is making is in consensus with what, what our, our departments want. And it may not look like that to the outside public, but I'm just trying to make sure that we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and do everything essential to make sure that we are giving the departments what they need from the currently existing buildings that we have and the, the space that's available, so.
Thank you, Supervisor Gonzalez and Supervisor Satello. So Jason, we have been having conversations in conjunction with administration as well with Steve Loop and as a staff to try and figure out a way that we can come back. And that's both physically responsible for the county because we know there's an added cost for us to be outside. Now, returning back, especially being in the downstairs floor, really does help us with ADA accessibility, voting and out, makes it a lot easier for staff, including myself, to be able to move the equipment that, you know, over 100 pieces of equipment that have to go out to voting locations each site. So that does help. As Henny Ring said as well, from the conversation we had, one of the fortunate aspects of this fire was that it also has kickstarted a lot of our retention and scanning process. So we're constantly working to try and identify which books we can get rid of and which we can't. Out of all the books that we have, there is a percentage that we're going to have to keep forever. Its historical documents are over 100 years old. But there's a lot of books, especially from the eighties forward, that's all already digitized and there's no legal requirement to keep. So instead of having an addition of 500 books that are easily accessible to the public, we are going to continue scanning and make them available in computer terminals and they can just be looked up. So it's a very small percentage of books are going to be kept. Those are those historicals handwritten kind of books, the ones from the 1858, 1878, those kinds of books. So ultimately, we do support this plan and the Hall Records, we, once we remove all those books and a lot of that equipment and with the additional space that's being opened up overall and that all these walls are being removed and it takes a lot of the obstruction from the old courthouse, we don't need the additional space. So the county is more than willing, administration, Steve, whoever in the staff needs that space, it's there.
Because I understand you're quite happy at your current location.
We're extremely happy at their new location, but you know, we also have to be stewards of the voters, right? We have to see that, I understand there's an added cost for us being there, but we'd love to stay there if there was an ability, but if not, we're more than happy to return.
Okay. Any questions?
I have more questions, I guess, not, not for Francisco per se. But so with, with some of the decisions that we're making today, okay, let me back up a little bit. First of all, I want to thank you guys, Salman, Steve, friends of the library, Austin, like everybody has been so incredible to work with. And I know we've been like, no, let's look at this, wait, let's look at this. And I know that we've kind of delayed things in trying to make sure that we are really making the best decision for this community. Kind of funny, we kind of went full circle and we're back to square one. But truly, we know we investigated every single option. And while I loved potentially the courthouse, it's just not enough square feet. And so it just doesn't make sense. And so thank you so much for your patience, your willingness to look into this. And, and so I'm really excited to see where we are today, that, all right, now it's pedal to the metal and let's get going and let's meet all of these milestones. It's going to be aggressive, but I think we can do it. On, so I'm fully, fully supportive and so thankful for all of the things that have been done with the library so far. In regards to the old courthouse, I've got a couple of questions. So I know, you know, today we're being asked about this release for RFP for the courthouse design. With that, do we need to decide today, are we, do we have to decide which departments it is today? Or is it kind of like, that's just going to be a talk as we kind of go through this and we'll be able to figure that out? Or do you kind of need concrete, like who's going in there today?
I would say more of the latter and specifically if the ad hoc can, you know, provide direction that there is, I'll say, three major departments and a smaller department, i.e. assessor, treasurer, elections, and the larger departments, and then IT department. If you can give us that direction, I think that's enough because we do want to put in the RFP, we want to give some direction to the architect in that regard versus, you know, 10 smaller departments. So we are looking for that. And if, you know, that can't be provided today, we could have a special meeting next week in that regard. We do also, our goal is to update the full board with those type of decisions, just, and that'll be more of an update, but it, we want to start having the conversation about the decisions that have kind of been made. As you just mentioned, we've been through a process and here's where we've landed. So, so we are looking for that general direction. So for, if that answers your question for number two on the direction of this.
Kind of. I mean, it does answer my question. I'm clear now that you want direction on which departments. I guess I'm a little conflicted with it only because obviously Francisco is here and can speak a little bit to the elections department. Library is here, they can speak to kind of the temporary, that seems like it's a, a good temporary move, not too far from their original location. So it kind of seems like it keeps it consistent for the community, but.
The assessor and treasurer.
The assessor and treasurer, how do they, I mean, are, I, I actually, I don't remember which one, maybe it was both of them that I spoke to previously, and I think there was a desire to come back to this location. But the location, while it's in the same place, it's a different floor now. And so I, has anybody talked to them? Are they okay with being on the second floor?
Yes, so the answer is yes. I talked to Tom Slavich, the assessor specifically, he's fine with being on the top floor. I have not touched base with the treasurer, Melinda. She does have a smaller department than, than Tom, so, but they've definitely both expressed an opinion to come back to the building. And Tom has definitely confirmed that he's fine with being on the top floor.
Is there enough space on the top floor for, for sure, both of those departments and potentially adding IT there as well?
Yes, so we, we have to go through the programming with the architect. There's definitely room for assessor, treasurer, you know, IT department, we, you know, we non-architects think the answer is yes to that, but at least for the, the two larger departments, the assessor and treasurer, to be on the top floor, we're pretty.
Is there any opportunity for, you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe they're, they've got kind of a front staff that deals with the public, but there would be enough room for, say, something like that. But then if they needed additional space, they could move into kind of the Hall of Records for maybe kind of backstaff stuff or things of that sort where, to make sure that we have enough room for those departments?
Yeah, perhaps.
It just seems like they've got a lot of space where they currently are. And we're going to ask them to get back into that sardine can.
Well, they did fit there before. I do know that the assessor wants to add some staff and maybe even the treasurer, a staff person, but they were there before. And I, I think we can make a more efficient layout for them. Again, yeah, we have to go through that programming and we'll obviously be talking to them in detail once we onboard the architect.
And if they're upstairs, I know both of those departments are departments that get quite a few people from the public that visit them. Everything would be ADA compliant, right? So we're talking that elevator getting back into service, right?
That is correct. And we've even talked about having one single point of entry for the public for a lot of different reasons, so that's been discussed. But yeah, we'd have to update the elevator 100% so that it's ADA compliant, so.
Okay. And do we have any, I mean, I'm assuming no, but any of the costs to redo the old courthouse? Like are we, is this going to all be covered by insurance?
The answer to that is a question mark. So we do have 1.8 million. One of the other silver linings of the fire is that there was money set aside for abatement of the old courthouse, of their walls and ceilings and some other things. And, and that's not needed anymore. So we actually have $1.8 million of funds available that has been set aside for the courthouse in addition to whatever insurance money is going to become available. But I think we're still waiting for that answer, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if, if the departments are good with it and they're okay with the move, then I would be, the only one I'm, I'm a little hesitant to be, is putting grounds maintenance inside the Hall of Records. It seems like such a beautiful building that I know none of the public ever gets to see, but it really seems like a special building and I worry about putting grounds maintenance in there. All I think of is grounds maintenance, like all these greasy, oily machines and whatnot. And it's like, oh my gosh, they're going to go in there.
I think the purpose of that is really more office space for them because if you know where their, their building, their metal building is here, they just don't have any office space. So they probably use that whole part for their machine equipment sort of thing. I believe that would be mostly just office space for them.
So is there any potential for having some additional office space? I know we have other people that do not have offices.
Namely supervisors.
Really nice to have some, if it's going to be office space, like if we could build a couple of extra in there, might be really helpful.
I can answer. So there are certain things that aren't going back in is the law library isn't going back, that's going to be electronic. So there is that space that where the stacks were that could potentially be made in office space there for the board as well.
So. I'm glad you brought up the law library because I want to go back to that question. But anyways, I'll let you finish.
No, 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 go ahead. I was just going to say that I, you know, I'm in favor of this moving forward. I know we don't have to make all of the decisions today, so I'm sure that there's going to be things that come back and we can work through all of these. But as a whole, I'm, I'm good with moving forward. So, thank you.
We'll get to your one, two, and three as the conversation continues. So going back to the law library, since the fire, and it wasn't even efficient the way we had it because the books were antiquated. I mean, when I attended law school, it wasn't even a good resource for me to use. But I know that through talks, multiple talks that I have had with the former librarian, Nora Kanta, is that we could do a kiosk there at the, at the library. So is that something that you all are looking at to do maybe, you know, Nexus Lexus kind of service to be able to be included in the new library formation? Is having the law library included in, in the new? Because it just has to be available to the, to the public.
Correct.
It's just too costly for just members of the public to be able to, to seek that service on their own. And we have to have that in terms of provided at the library. So is that something that's going to be housed there at the library?
So again, it's something that I'm working with insurance because that's going to be covered that way. It's going to be electronic. We're going to go, we're going to modernize a little bit. I have talked with Austin, we did find a location a little, they would have a desk, basically a computer station, law library, it'd be advertised that way, have that designated space. With the relocation, I'm sure we could probably find another space just to move it over because it's going to be all electronic. So we can move that computer system most likely over without a problem. But that's where we're going to go with the future. Part of the reason why it hasn't gone just yet is we're still waiting for insurance to finish up some final audit from the restoration place or the restoration company. So there's still some things that are kind of pending that we're still trying to work out. But once we get that, we'll go ahead and install that in the library and they'll have this designated space. And we'll bring it back to the board so the board can see that.
Okay, great.
And we can announce it to the public.
And then the second major question regarding the library and its state of construction, what's the status of the kiosk and when is that going to be put in place so that we can rely on that as an alternate source for library services?
Yeah, I'll, Salman, address that one.
Thank you, Steve. So for the kiosk, we do need to engage two contractors. One is the contractor who will be installing the foundation, the concrete work, the site work. And the other is the vendor who will be delivering the equipment and providing, providing us the installation services. The contractor, as of now, we have meetings set up with the vendor, actually not a contractor, with the vendor in September, last week of September, to meet with them onsite to discuss the approach of the project and where they will be installing their equipment. We are in process of RFQ or RP for the, for the construction team. We received the drawings last week for the kiosk project and submitted to our building department for review and approval. That is in process. So once we have the drawings, we will send those drawings for, or for bid because based on the size of the project, we are not just go with any contractor. So we need to follow the standard policy and procedure for RFQ, RFP for this project. So we are anticipating that by the end of September, we will have the contractor onboard that we can set a meeting with the vendor and we can meet at site.
Okay, because this is a two-year conversation, two-year project that is still not yet started. And I'm really disappointed because I know for two summers now, I've been waiting for the, the cement to be laid and it seemed like it's just one obstacle after another. And we need to have that in place so that when the library goes down for construction, remodel, whatever, that that is going to be a viable option for us to look for, for library services.
I agree, that's the plan. So we can have that in place prior to move the library staff from the library building.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, those are two of my major concerns regarding the library. Going back to all of the questions that you have asked us, yesterday at the Board of Supervisors meeting, we had a robust conversation regarding RFPs and who has the authority and do ad hocs have the authority to do that? So I want to make sure that we are moving forward and we take that, that authority to move forward with this RFP to, to accommodate whatever the needs that you want. So specifically tell us what you need regarding the RFP, Steve.
You bet. So our current, current procurement policies, technically staff can proceed with RFPs and RFQs because we're not allocating any funding. For the larger ones, the procurement policy says that our county council should be involved with reviewing the RFP document, which we'll do for this, obviously. But we just want, today, we're hoping that the ad hoc will say, yes, you know, please move forward with the whole RFP process so that we can release RFP and then an architect could be onboarded. And again, the contract would have to be approved by the board of supervisors because it's funding, so.
And to add to that, our intent is to bring it to the full board on September 10th as a recommendation from this ad hoc, if, if this ad hoc so chooses, I mean, committee, sorry.
And another item from yesterday, but also touched on the conversation of construction management firms, we need to make sure we stay on top of this one regarding the timelines of funding and everything is there. And as Chair Curro mentioned yesterday, is that the construction management team needs to be responsible to us, the county, as the owners of the property, to make sure that we are looking at every avenue possible, that we stay on timeline, that we don't allow something to fall through the trucks because, or through the cracks, excuse me, because this is a very condensed timeline that you're giving us, yes. And so somebody has to be held accountable.
Right. So although I think the architect is critical path, right after that, we'll, you know, assuming the architect RFP moves forward, then we'll be issuing a RFP for the, I don't know if it's RFP or RFQ for a construction management team, so for sure.
And I understand it's a different construction management team that we're talking about for this one versus that, that other situation, but I just want to make sure we're, we're on top of it.
Sounds good.
What is, if I can remember correctly, going back a few, few months, Damon, Damon Felice was hired for what part of this job?
So Felice Construction is a CM firm for the library expansion.
Okay. So, and is that kind of what you're referring to with the CM?
Yes.
So he'll be the CM for the library expansion project?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm confident of his ability, but I just want. And I'm confident of his ability, but I just want to make sure we.
Well, I think it's great having somebody that's local and that, I think we'll all be able to really, I mean, it'll be so visible what's going on there, right? It's at the heart of our kind of center. So yeah, I do agree. I think we've got to stay on top of it, but I'm, I, I feel better about this one.
So you're looking for approval from us then for the RFP process to move forward, but within that process, we have to look at item number two that specifically designates which departments are going to be included in that, right? So let's, you and I have that conversation right now then, and I know this is the first time we're looking at and talking about it. So you know for certain, because you have a conversation, you said with, with Tom, that he's, that he's interested in coming back to the courthouse, correct?
Well, if I can remember correctly, he came to one of our facility committee meetings and he commented, and it was when we were looking at having possibly the library at the old courthouse. And if I can remember correctly, I thought he said when he came to that meeting, that they had a desire to move back to that location, so.
Can we get a text or an email really quickly, a phone call to Melinda to make sure that she is on board too?
We actually, Steve and I and the team had a meeting yesterday and they are, Melinda and Tom are, they want to come back to the location. As far as upstairs, downstairs, I think that's where we need clarity with Melinda's office, but.
Correct. So Tom has said he'll, he's fine with his team being upstairs. And Melinda said she's fine with coming back to the courthouse for the treasurer teams.
Because I do know that they require, or they would like to be centrally located within, you know, the city limits as opposed to out, you know, out in the San, San Felipe Road where they're at. And we just heard from Francisco that, you know, the bottom floor is preferentially to him also, so that we know the Assessor's Office, Treasurer's Office, the Elections Office. So that just takes us back then into the IT department and potentially using that same space for library staff during the construction timeframe. So do we go IT slash library? Is that what we're saying in terms of the departments?
Yeah, and you can even say a small department, you know, approximately 10 staff, i.e. the I department, IT department, doesn't have to be IT department, but you could say the IT department or a similar staffing size can be relocated there and library staff can possibly be temporarily relocated there, you know, if they can't find another location.
I would normally say per staff recommendation, so I'm going to defer to you.
First half recommendation, sure. Sounds good.
So are we okay with that Supervisor Sotelo? Okay, and that's enough direction from us that you need?
Uh huh.
Okay, so per the direction you just gave us then, so we have item number two then taken care of, so that just goes back to us then voting to move forward with the RFP process then, right? And we talked about the Hall of Records, so do you have enough information from our conversations, Dulce and Henny for regarding the Hall of Records?
Yeah, just, just to confirm, we're, we're okay with them moving forward without jeopardizing the integrity of the building itself.
And if there's empty space, potentially space for the Board of Supervisors to have offices?
On the top floor, right?
Or anywhere.
At the building, okay.
Yeah.
Anywhere in the, and it doesn't even have to be the Board of Supervisors, like anywhere that it, so many departments are looking for additional space. And so I think, I just hope that we're kind of open-minded and are willing to kind of think outside the box and how can we make this space work for as many people as possible.
So that's item two and three then addressed, so that takes us back then to the RFP process. Do you need a motion?
If you so choose, yeah.
It'd be nice to, to have a motion, just the recommendation of the committee.
Sure, so I'll make a motion that the facility committee recommends moving forward with the RFB process to onboard an architect to design the old courthouse remodel for future county staff utilization, including looking at the Assessor, Treasurer, IT department and possibly the Elections Department on the bottom floor.
Is that detailed enough?
Yes.
Perfect.
And I'll second that motion. Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so you have a two, unanimous vote to move forward with RFP, okay?
Thank you.
All right. So anything further you require from us then?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, that's the last item. And I did put in my two cents about the library and the kiosk because that's been sitting heavy, weighing heavy on my chest for the last couple of months. All right, so if there are no further items, when do we plan to have our next meeting? Because it's not stated on the agenda. Because we did say previously, earlier in the year, that we would meet more sooner than necessary if we had to. So when's tentatively the next meeting date for this organization?
I'm showing that it is Sept, yeah, October 23rd.
So 10:23 at 2:00 PM, correct? Okay.
And if there's anything that comes up and you need us to meet before then, I think both Supervisor Gonzalez and I are both agreeable to doing whatever needs to be done to keep things on process and moving forward.
Especially given the timeline that has just been quoted to us, yes. Okay, all right. So then without further than to do, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned at 2:50.